Well, welcome to our Greeley Evan School Board meeting. It's Monday, February 12th, 2017. This meeting will come to order. Will you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt?
Present.
Mr. Hayfley?
Mr. Hayfley is excused this evening.
Mr. Lydiak?
Mr. Lydiak is also excused this evening. We're at a skeleton crew.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Dr. Richard?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Five members present.
Thank you very much. While the Board of Education president announcements will be brief, I just want to point out this evening that we are in an enviable position, one that we haven't really seen an awful lot of opportunity to engage in, and it's thanks to the voters of the district. Tonight, we'll see some of the first mill levy override dollars officially get expended with the intent of reaching in and supplementing educational programs, supporting safety and security issues, and providing for a little bit of the massive deferred maintenance activities that the district has been looking at someday, having enough money to participate in and engage. So if you keep your eyes open, you'll be able to spot some of that that will slip through this evening's activities. The next item is the hearing of persons desiring to speak before the Board of Education, and normally, we have the person step up and chat a little bit about their particular interest area, and we don't normally argue or discuss, but we may do a follow-up with the presenter. And the first presenter is Ms. Loretta Scott, talking about digital literacy and social change. Ms. Scott, thank you for coming. Please step right up to the microphone and adjust it to your particular height.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that work for everyone?
Brilliant.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, friends and people that I don't know as well, but I know you for your work that you do in the community. So I've come tonight to talk a little bit, and you should have a handout that I've given to you, which has got the full, all of my lecture, because I won't have time to do it all. And I provided a copy of the glossary of digital literacy, which is what I'm here to talk about. It's really important that we start to address this issue in our schools in a more forward-thinking way, because social change is upon us, and it's happening now. So I teach for the University of Maryland. I teach Writing 101. My students are civilian workers, government workers, and also military, and they're in high positions, many of them, in agencies in Washington DC. So I have privilege to a lot of information. These students have to write research papers, so, and I've been teaching there since 2009, so I have quite a bit of background there in that particular, with that particular population. And I also have had the first computer literacy program in California in business education. I was the innovator for that. So my knowledge goes back into the companies that actually formed computers, the computer industry. This was 1976, when it was really, right, really thriving. So out of that, my students have a lot to offer in terms of the information that they provided through the years, and this is in computer hardware and software, in the platforms and the processes that they use. And so I wanted to share some of my thoughts and views, insights of what I see.
We'll have just one minute left, so I just want you to know.
Okay, the students, oh, thank you for reminding.
Thank you.
The students' literacy isn't what I would like it to be, and it's because they have to write their stuff so that we can, as users, understand it. So that's what they do. So what we have to do is up our game in our schools to get the students and the general public's vocabulary up, so that those people can write more informative information for us as a public. This thing with bots and the processes of filter, they're called filter bubbles, victimize people, and they don't know they're being victimized. They're victimized twice. So I've got the documentation in here, and I've suggested three different sources that could be exploited for information. One of them is on behavior, one of them is on the design, and the other is on trust. Trust is changing in our society. So I encourage you to do this for our students, and I hope that the people in Greeley will support you in those efforts. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Ms. Scott, for keeping an eye on us and sharing your expertise with us.
Yes.
Appreciate it. And we'll have your handout distributed to us from Ms. Crane.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next person who's interested to speak before the board is Ms. Erin Schneider, and she's with the GEA, and she's got some specific school-related events to talk a little bit about. Welcome, Erin.
Thank you. So, Dr. Pilch, President Dewitt, I apologize, because I know these dates are already on your calendar, but I'm taking advantage of the public invitation as well. So Aunt Kay Hyman, we are doing some amazing things. First of all, I would like to invite people to our Spreading Kindness event, which is on February 14th from 2:00 to 3:00. All of our students have created cute little rocks that they got to paint and put little inspirational words and kindness inspiration stuff. So what we're looking for is community members to come and play games with us, read books with us, and then we will give them a token of appreciation as a little rock. And they're so cute. So if nothing else, you should just come and get a rock. We have 700 of them. Then, our second opportunity for you to be in our schools is February 22nd is International Digital Learning Day, and this day will be full of learning as usual, but this is the opportunity for you to come and see how we use our technology and our digital learning applications with our students. There will be a little bit of a breakfast from 7:30 to 8:00, and then from 8:00 to 9:00, people, community, are invited into our classrooms and able to observe, and then there will be a question and answer period after that, and that is what I'm here for. So thank you for your time. Hope we'll see somebody there. Yeah, thank you.
Schneider, thank you very much.
You bet.
And Ms. Scott, we see an exact example of what you were suggesting. Ms. Scott, thank you for your idea about the digital component, and we've already got it turned around into the elementary school. That's not bad. One night's work. I think that's great. Thank you both very much. The next item, Ms. Crane, is the Work Session Report, that which we just finished.
Board of Education President Roger Dewitt began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events and future agenda items. Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement Dr. Stacy Dattery provided information about the priority improvement schools that are in years 1 to 4 of the Accountability Clock. Mr. Dewitt continued a discussion on board protocols that began at the January 16th work session, and that concluded the work session.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Pilch, it's time for the Superintendent's Report, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. So, you know, I wanted to mention that also on tonight's consent agenda, in relation to spending those revenues for the mill levy override, if you took a look at our fourth quarter financials, you noticed a little spike in dollars being moved from the General Operating Fund over to Nutrition Services Fund in December. Those were actually the dollars to increase the hourly rate of our nutrition service workers. Yay, yes. But I appreciate, a board member asked a question earlier today about that, and so it gave me an opportunity to talk about it and address it here tonight with you all. Also on the consent agenda tonight, that we won't open up very likely, and talk about our contracts related to the ongoing work to try to get Meeker Elementary up and running again, and to ensure that education continues at Generation Church for the Meeker Elementary students and staff. You know, so we, tonight, are looking at some sizable contracts around that bus contract to continue to provide the charter buses to get the students to school on time and in a safe manner, and then also the architectural contract for the work that must be done in the old Meeker School to rebuild it after the flood damage, and then also the lease contract for our leasing at Generation's Church. We do expect that most of these expenses will come back to us from our insurance companies, but we're still working with insurance to navigate all of this. I do want to say that insurance has said to us, you know, you should probably be back in that old school, in your building, back in your school by April 1st. And so they may stop paying after April 1, and so the district may be on the hook for May, or April and May, and I just want to be really upfront about that. It does not look possible to be back in that building by April 1st. But we'll keep working with them. Megan, our Chief Financial Officer, and her team are working almost daily to continue to resolve the issues around this. And the good news is, students are in school and instructions continuing. I want to remind everybody about the press conference that was held last week in Denver that was really led and promoted by Superintendent statewide to promote the new House Bill 1232. This is the House bill that is being sponsored by Representative Dave Young that would allow us to significantly restructure the funding formula statewide for Public Education K-12. And the Superintendent's Group has come together, all but a small handful of us have endorsed this. I endorsed it, so I'm not in the "us" that didn't endorse it, but most of the Superintendents, of the 176, I think the last number that I heard was 172, have fully endorsed this funding formula. And what the formula does, this proposal would do, is actually ensures that education is adequately and equitably funded throughout the state of Colorado, regardless of your zip code, and it does not take anyone backwards from where they are now in terms of their funding. So I'll keep you posted on that as we go forward, but big work going on there. Teresa Myers was able to attend the press conference last week, as I was out of town at a conference, but she was sending me pictures and really said there was a lot of excitement and great energy around that. We had a teacher from Northridge High School in attendance, so we're pretty excited about this. It really is about fixing the big problem. We were able to fix a little bit of our problem here in District 6 with the passing of a mill levy override this past November, and we will always be forever grateful to our voters for their generosity in that. This is really about fixing the problem statewide, so that the onus does not continue to be on the local school district. It's about fixing funding for every school district, all 176 of us in the state of Colorado. So also on the consent agenda tonight, and moving on already, in our personnel report, you will see the recommendation for the hiring of the principal for Madison Elementary School. I'm pleased to recommend to you all Steve Eisenhower as the principal for Madison. It's my understanding that Steve was previously a principal in our district, a decade or so ago, at Shoshine Elementary, and left our district and went to a neighboring district and has served as a principal in that district, two different principalships in that district. And, you know, I think there is no greater compliment to a school district when someone who left us has decided to return to us and come and lead a school here in District 6. And he, his superintendent, when I talked to his superintendent about him leaving, his superintendent said to me, "That will leave a big hole for us to fill." But I get it. And so we're really excited to welcome Steve, and I wanted to just mention that he's on that consent agenda tonight for hire. So thank you very much, Mr. Dewitt, and members of the board.
Great, thank you. Well, we move to the approval of the agenda. That's an item that's going to need a motion for us to consider, if I could hear one tonight.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you both. Discussion or comments, questions? Won't see any indication for that. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item is the Consent Agenda, and the action on this particular item requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you both. Comments, questions? We'll go ahead to a roll. Call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Dr. Pilch, way in the back of the chamber, I see some of our Council of Student Representatives, and I believe we've invited them to drop by and give us an update. Is that correct?
That would be correct. You know, at the end of every single day in the work we do here in District 6, this is really what it's about. It's about the young people who we are preparing for their life after high school, and we have some of those folks here. We're not going to quite let them leave us yet. They still have the rest of the school year to finish out, but I'm happy to turn this over to them. I know they'll introduce themselves. Caitlin, are you going to start us out?
I am, so...
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. Go right ahead.
So yes, we're just here for our monthly update to let you know, kind of recap on our last semester, and let you know what's coming up for this semester. So let's do some quick introductions, because we have some people that it's their first time here. So as always, I'm Caitlin Olson, President of the Student Council.
I'm Margaret Longcore, Vice President.
Dax Jones, Representative.
Alfonso Acosta, also Representative.
Gabby Ortiz, also Representative.
And I'm Zaylene Ramirez, also Representative. So we just thank you, as always, for having us tonight. So Meg and I are just going to touch on some of what happened last semester, so some recap in numbers. So we had only 10 meetings, having them bimonthly, but we all had no more than three absences at any and all meetings with 20 members, which is pretty spectacular, I'd say. And so far this year, we've had perfect attendance at all of our meetings, so we're doing great in that aspect. Last semester, we had two events. It was the District-wide Talent Show, of course, and also our gift wrapping event with the money that we raised from that. In addition to that, we had an event, I believe it was our talent show, that raised over $1,500 for kids in the district, which was a great success, and we've averaged 35 kids per district at our events this year, which is wonderful when you consider the number of students in the district. We also had a donation of over $1,000 to our board in preparation of future events and activities. So now, I'll let the rest of our representatives kind of give you an overview of what our next semester will look like.
So as you guys know, our mission as the board is to create collaborative leaders within the students of District 6 by unifying them through service and community. So that being said, our first community service project for this semester is on February 23rd from 7:00 to 9:00 at ECA. Here, we will be having four different kind of projects that we'll be working on. The first one will be making dog toys out of old t-shirts that will be donated to the Humane Society. The second one, we will be making cards for senior citizens here in our community and making letters for veterans. And then we will be making tie blankets for the homeless at the homeless shelter and for the United Way. Then our last one, kind of similar to what their students did, where we will be making kindness rocks by painting them and then putting them throughout the community at parks. So our goal is to get at least 50 students to be attending this project.
So our next event that we will be having is a game night, and it'll be on March 23rd, and all the students from all high schools are invited. And the other event that we will be having is on April 27th.
And in May, we will have our last meeting on May 1st, where we will welcome the new members and our new officers. And on May 4th, we will be having our end-of-the-year banquet, where we will honor our seniors for receiving their cords, and also, we would like you guys to come, if you are free.
So adding on to that, we would like to let you guys know that we are adding letterings and honor cords for our seniors that are on our board, and the requirements for that is they must have a GPA of 2.5 or higher, have never been expelled, and they must attend bimonthly meetings with less than or no absences. They must at least attend two school board meetings with us and two Weld Mount events. Also, again, we would like to remind you that you're always welcome to any of our
So that's all we have for you today. I also just printed out some schedules for the rest of our semester, so like I said, or like Alfonso said, we would love to have you at any and all of our events and meetings, and especially at our banquet on May 4th, as we'll be inviting all of our board plus our parents and things like that. So do you guys have any questions about what our semester will look like?
Ms. Pappas has one.
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate you all coming to our board meetings. This has made a big difference in our understanding of what you do, and it's just nice to have you come and talk about the quality work that you're doing as a leadership council. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Zaylene, I did not recognize you until that moment.
Ms. Solis.
Just to thank you again, and reiterate what Ms. Pappas said, but then to also really open up that door, that we are a board that are listening, and we really value your opinions on the work that you do, and just the effort of bringing everyone together. This really is our school district. These are all our students, and to see you work together as charters in District 6 schools is just amazing, and you sound like you have some really fun events, so I look forward to them.
And I haven't done any research on this, but I don't know the status of other school districts with respect to this kind of leadership group, but you guys are all-stars. The way that this thing has grown over the past few years, you've been instrumental in seeing that there's people to step up into the positions that some of you apparently think you might be vacating. How many of you are seniors?
We have seven seniors. Not all of us, but...
And four of you tonight are?
Yes.
So you've prepared the place for another student to step up, so that there'll be a change?
Yes.
And it'll be different? But you've given the opportunity for the group to continue to grow. That's big time. That's great. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Nighty night. Go do homework. The next item is the First Read of Policy BDFC Preschool Counsel. Dr. Pilch, do you feel up to chatting a little bit about the preschool council with us?
Absolutely. You know, at first, I wasn't going to bring this forward, because I thought it meant new work on the behalf of our district staff and community members. And then I, I was so ever-enlightened by the amazing people who worked with me, who said, "We are already doing all of this. All of this is already in state law," primarily that we will have a preschool council and we will meet, and that it's already in state law. And so we are really codifying our practice currently with the possible adoption of this policy. So probably long overdue for us to bring this policy to you.
It's practice, maybe?
Yes, it is.
Before we've got it outlined. Well, I'm certainly appreciative of the information and wandering through it. I too felt like, oh, boy, we've got another opportunity to get people together to do this work, but you're already in operation.
Yeah, I knew it.
So thank you for informing us about this, and we'll see it again soon in an action item.
And I guess I would just add that it's always nice to be in compliance with state law.
Isn't it?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Dr. Richard, it's good you remember that. If I haven't lost my page, the next item will be the repeal of First Read of Policy GBEEA, Use of Social Media for School-Related Purposes. And this is just public information. Dr. Pilch, a little summary?
Absolutely. So we are asking you to repeal this policy, which talks specifically about social media in relation to instructional technology and the use of digital technology in the school district, and then we will be folding the language that was necessary in this policy into the revisions to Policy GBEE that you will see here in two items, staff use of the Internet and electronic communications. So it all moves into one policy.
Okay, less is more. Comments or questions before we move to that very next step? Revisions to Policy GBEE, staff use of the Internet and electronic communications. This is an action item, so a motion is required for us to consider it.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to Policy GBEE, staff use of the Internet and electronic communications as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Something else you'd like to add to the mix here, Dr. Pilch, if you don't mind?
I'll just add, this policy was first adopted in District 6 in 2005 and last revised in 2009, so a lot has changed in technology use since 2009. So in this policy, you see significant revisions, but in our opinion, they're very appropriate, and they're in compliance with state law, as well as with our Colorado Association of School Boards.
Fine. I haven't heard from anyone about this. Dr. Richard, please.
So one of my notes was also "needed," the word "needed" all in capital letters. So yes, it is good to come back to this one. I did have a question about in paragraph 3. So it defines district information technology, and it defines computer, and then the term "personal communication device" means district cell phones, smartphones, tablets, cameras, audiovisual, audio/video recorders, players, and other handheld electronic communications, computing, data storage devices. So when it says "personal communication device" and "district cell phones," what does that mean about a teacher who has their own personal phone? Can I get some clarification on what that actually means?
Sure. So my cellphone is my personal communication device, and I receive a district stipend, as do all of our district leadership team members. So in that case, it's their personal communication device, but it also has some relation to being a district cellphone, even though we typically do not purchase cell phones. We have, in the past, purchased some cell phones and have had some employees with cell phones. Megan, do we have anybody health services now with cell phones? Facility services. So in that case, we actually provide them with cell phones and expect them to be available on their cell phones. And part of that is, they don't have a desk phone they're answering, and they, I think they prefer it to be a district-owned device, is my understanding, as Megan and I have talked about this.
So this policy covers only devices that have been purchased by the school district?
Well, typically, yes, but, so, Dr. Richard, I want to be clear, though. My phone and other district leadership team members' phones are still really held to the standards of this policy, even though I own my phone, because I receive a district stipend. So that's where it gets a little fuzzy.
Okay, and so let's take it down to a classroom teacher?
Yes.
And their own personal...
They do not receive a stipend for that. So that is their personal cellphone.
And that would be excluded by this.
And that would not be the personal communication device described here.
No, although, if they're using their personal cellphone to, say, manage their Facebook page for their classroom, then that Facebook page for their classroom does fall under this.
Okay. So I was just trying to get my arms around where, who this applies to, which devices this applies to and doesn't apply to.
Yeah.
Because I guess my interest is where we open on liability, especially with personal, non-district-issued devices?
Yeah.
And also employees, you know, opportunity to maintain a personal cellphone.
Absolutely, absolutely. So a classroom teacher who owns his or her own phone, which they all would, we don't provide any cell phones for staff, for classroom teachers, the only place that the district would have any purview is when they are beginning to access district websites or district information. And we would never go in and pull a cellphone from a staff member and expect that we would have the right to preview that staff phone. Now, I will tell you, there have been cases where Mr. Gates is investigating something, and he has asked for a staff member's personal phone.
So if I'm a teacher and I'm checking my district email via my phone...
It's still your personal device. It's still your personal device. Now, if there's something untoward going on, and we believe that you've been using your personal phone to do that, and we're investigating that, there might be a case where we would ask you if you're willing to turn over your personal phone.
Okay. Thank you.
But realistically, it's their personal phone. Now, again, where that gets a little less, I personally own this, is where I'm receiving a stipend for that cellphone.
Right. Well, it's always... Well, it's always a difficult line to find that protection for our students, and as well as individual opportunity.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely. And you know, when we think about Colorado Open Records and a Colorado Open Records request, those requests could come in asking for things from district email, from district records. But they don't have the right to come in and ask a teacher to release her personal emails, his or her personal emails.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions, comments?
I think this is why no one has revised this policy in nine years. It is very complex. It is very complex.
And once we revise it, something, a new term or something else will pop up.
We may revisit it again sooner than the previous visit.
Yeah.
Having had a little bit of a discussion here, I think we're ready for a roll call. Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item is revisions to policy DJA, purchasing and purchasing authority. And a motion is going to be required to act on this policy.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to policy DJA, purchasing authority as presented. Second?
Been moved and seconded. Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I'm pleased to see this for a couple of reasons, but do you have a few words to offer on this?
I will just share that, you know, I think the question first came up around my purchasing authority in relation to, really, we have the mill levy override revenue, and we will be doing a lot of purchasing over the next several months. But I know that you increased this authority when I first came to the district. So Ms. Sponsor, our chief financial officer, and I did some research around the policies that other districts hold on this. And what we found is that most districts do not have a policy that limits the purchasing authority of the superintendent. The reason behind that is that the Board of Education, of course, approves the budget. They approve the quarterly financials. And so thereby, that's the oversight that the board has on the spending. And very few limits are placed on superintendents in the larger districts. Now, some of our small districts, they're down to approving travel for teachers. I found that one when we were looking. But this is similar to one of our closest neighboring districts that's close in size, and the spending authority there is at the amount we're recommending as well.
Comments? Questions from board members? We know that there's care taken whenever we ask someone to bid on an object of some kind that we're interested in getting, and we know there's care taken to observe the funding that's going out the door that we've brought in. You're at peace, Dr. Pilch, with us continuing to maintain this sort of a little step at which you're going to continue to let the board be apprised of something over 250 grand. It doesn't show a lack of trust in you. It's just a tradition that I think our district has held a little bit, you know, conservative fiscal role. But we have opened the door, because obviously, you've proven yourself to be able to handle this. And frankly, we're opening the door to quite a bit of purchases that we would be meeting pretty regularly to give approval on some of those purchases.
Absolutely. And I'm very comfortable with this. And at some point, if the board feels like it doesn't feel quite right, we can come back and revisit this. The other thing I will offer is that, as we go throughout the request for proposal process in relation to the mill levy override dollars, we will continue to update that every week in our e-week bulletin to you all, so you know what's going out for proposal or going out for bid, and you can see those dollars being managed in that way also.
And we also have a community committee that is on the job now.
Yes, we do.
Watching the expenditures. And so I don't think that we're missing in seeing these monies. We just don't want to be a block. We don't want to be a block in terms of keeping this money from going to where it should be going, simply for approval. So with it, it's been moved and seconded and discussion beyond one might have expected. Roll call. Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is revisions to policy... Let's see here. Where am I? Just a second. Revision to policy IKE, ensuring all students meet standards. And a motion is required to act on this.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to policy IKE, ensuring all students meet standards as presented.
Second?
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, this has been some revision here on the ensuring all students meet standards. Something you want to point out? We've had the opportunity to look through this material.
Yeah, I will just add that this policy was last revised in 2013, five years ago. So what you see here are the most contemporary recommendations that have come to us from the Colorado Association of School Boards. And I, you know, I'm happy to bring up Dr. Daddery or Mr. Tuttle, if you have additional questions, too, to help out on this.
Comments from board members' concerns at this time? We've had the chance to read through this. This contentious and very personal issue for a number of parents over time. So it's good to have this clarified and modernized, I guess. Dr. Richard?
Okay, so I'll admit, I was looking for another policy, but I'm on track with you now, I believe. So we're on IKE.
Correct.
Okay. Is this in relationship to the REED Act?
Yes.
And did you just say that?
No.
Okay, good, because I was really going to get myself away that I was someplace else. Okay, so this basically captures what's in that REED Act.
It absolutely does. And quite frankly, probably should have been revised a few years ago. And, you know, this is a complex policy to consider. And I understand why my predecessor might not have brought it forward in the past.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and when that legislation came through, the implications of this very policy were huge.
Yes.
So in other words, to pass it means that we'll be in compliance with state law.
Correct. You're going to continue to see some of these over the next few months.
Despite that, we may be in favor of it. I don't know. Let's see. Other comments? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. I think it's about time for a roll call. Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Dewitt, if I may. I believe we missed 8.03.
Did I do that?
Revisions to policy JQ.
Is that why I threw you off, Julie?
It's different, though. It's different in two different places. Because in my agenda, it's what comes now.
So in one of them, it's 8.06, and ours is 8.03.
Yeah. Okay.
So we're looking at policy JQ?
Yes.
Student fees? I have it in sequence here.
All right.
And that's what threw you, Julie. I never throw you.
I'm looking online. Okay.
So are we good to go?
Technology.
They're all there. It's all there.
All right. I'm always got a different drummer here. 8.06, revisions to policy JQ, student fees, fines, and charges. That's going to require a motion for us to consider.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to policy JQ, student fees, fines, and charges as presented.
Second? Thank you both. Dr. Pilch?
Well...
We're trying to help kids out with revision of supplies.
And with the risk of sounding redundant, this policy was last revised about eight years ago. These revisions ensure compliance with state law, and they also track with our current practices and our district policies and how we... what we believe in, and how we handle district fees and fines. So I might let you vote on this, and then I would like to maybe make one more comment, if I may. Not about this, just about policy revision.
Oh, okay. Well, let's go back and see if anyone has any comments having read through the extracurricular activity eligibility issue, or rather, the fees. I've just flipped back again. The fees and charges. Comments from board members at this point? Dr. Richard, you're on again.
Okay. So a question about... One, two, three. Well, I guess under textbooks and library resources and other school property, textbooks shall be provided on a loan basis. Students may be asked to pay a non-refundable rental fee reasonably related to the actual cost of some or all of the textbooks provided for the student. Can you tell me more about a non-refundable rental fee?
We do not use this very often, but it might be the case with an advanced placement book, for example. It allows us to charge the student for things they might take with them from that textbook. And also, workbooks, for example. Dr. Daddery, what else would we use this for typically? See, she's looking at me like that. Pretty much hits it. Yeah.
There's some supplementary materials that you pull out from the booklet itself. It destroys the booklet.
Right, right. So, for example, we publish, or we print some of our own workbooks. So we charge a rental fee for those workbooks because the student actually takes that, those materials with them.
Okay.
And we call that a rental fee, rather than a purchase fee.
But it's rarely used.
Yeah, rarely.
But this opens a door that we can...
Yeah, rarely used.
So one of the things that I appreciate about this policy is the use throughout, well, mostly throughout, of the words "may" rather than "shall."
Yeah.
And just that opportunity to work with students. I appreciate, and now I'm not going to find it, but a statement in here saying that it is incumbent on the principals and teachers to find a way to make sure that students are not embarrassed or denied opportunity because of fees. And, you know, I guess I've taken it as a personal point of pride that we've tried to be a school that is non-fee. And because I think, you know, any time a kid has to walk away from an art class or taking a band course because of a cost, you know, maybe to some, that's above and beyond. But I think those are part of a real broad-ranging education. And we've, in fact, said that in our mission and vision. So I just, you know, our values of opportunity and choice and making a policy that opens the door for all kids to be able to be in there, to partner with families, that we don't put a lot of financial burdens on them just to have a well-rounded education. And that third value of students come first, that we can manage our funds to make sure that access is there for every student. That's hugely important in this, and I'm pleased to see that here. I think I see that here.
You see that here. And very well said, Dr. Richard. You all should really own this as a big point of pride. And it speaks to your beliefs and values and your mission that you have set for this school district. Those of us who have worked in other school districts have experienced the significant barriers that districts put in place, schools put in place, when we allow fees and we put fees into place. And, you know, I commend you all for having made that decision several years ago, way prior to my coming. And it does make a difference with our students who are in attendance in our courses, that they might not have even said, "Well, I'm not... I can't do that, because I don't know if I can afford that." And maybe not even considered that course before. And we've taken that barrier away.
Thanks.
Ms. Pappas?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Richard for bringing that up as well, because I think for those of us that have been in the district for a long time, I think we take this for granted. And I don't think that we really realize the importance of this. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
It's huge.
Well, it's something about public education,[1544.31]